Hi, you can do the last one. This is the second time.
I'm just waiting for it. I didn't want to.
Just so you know.
Just so you know.
It's pretty nice.
But at least some people think that was.
Let's go ahead and call the city to order. Martin said protocol please and invite.
Roy Hewitt.
Here.
Lisa Hatch.
Here.
Brad Castor.
Here.
Blake Gore.
Here.
And here Joseph Nielsen. Elaine Jerry.
Here.
Do you have any questions?
Certainly. Father, we just come before you and we thank you for the opportunity to get you to uphold our constitution and to help to keep the town together and keep it moving in a forward direction. We ask for your wisdom in being able to do that and we do it in an fair and just manner as well, Lord. And we thank you for tonight and ask you to just help us to make those wise choices for this town. In Jesus' name.
Amen. Beautiful.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, the foundation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, minutes of the meeting from January the 22nd. You have any questions or comments on the motion for approval? Thank you. February 12th. Excuse me. Everybody's got.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from February the 12th.
Second of the claim. Okay, I don't understand the motion to approve the minutes from February 12th.
I made it.
Oh, Elaine.
And claim second.
Okay, that was my claim.
Two separate discussions.
Second of the claim. On Friday, I said the same I.
Aye. Interesting.
Interesting. Petitions and public input. Anybody in the house, say your name?
I heard they were just going to talk about the parking. That's why I was curious. Is there a...
I'm sorry?
Is the parking issue going to be addressed tonight?
Uh, we just had a public workshop in there.
Oh, okay.
Headed up about that. So, I just heard you didn't...
No, that's all right.
Well, fingers...
Well, come up and talk to us.
Yeah, if you're...
You have some concerns?
No, I was more partially...
Go ahead and introduce yourself, please.
Observer Backer, here to talk about the town parking idea. I just know from the last town council meeting, there's concerns of extended parking on the streets and I agree there, there is some issues around town. Just were interested to see what the town council decided, if there was any conclusions on time limits or what their restrictions might, you know, limit. I do have field trailers that we try to park them off the street, building a garage, but we can't decide. But my parents, they're, I may wear it up out of alleyway, so I am limited to my property and what the street that you have. So, just concerned, interested.
Yeah, I remember that was discussed tonight. And what we're trying to do is, is get campers, horse trailers, vehicles that aren't being used that are just parked on the street, all winter long, get them off so guys can plow the snow.
Yeah.
And that, what we're talking about, I think, is probably a five day maximum to let a vehicle be parked on the, a camper or whatever parked on the street without being moved. We don't want to make a burden on everybody, but we have, we have to work with the town staff too.
No, I understand some part of the issue.
But I think, like you say, you've seen some of these vehicles that just set there for... No, we, what's fair for one is fair for all.
And we discussed maybe a special use permit in case there's some extending circumstances, you know, so it's not like it's cut and dry, you know? Somebody has an issue if you're building something and you need their supplies, I mean, I'm sure that, you know, we need to work around some of those issues.
Do you have any suggestions?
Yeah.
No, like the time limit does make sense when you're asking for five days, like two weeks, kind of camping off in the woods, you know, we should stay for about two weeks. I think woods would be happy to camp.
He gets more time off than most.
Bill, that's the problem. I just changed jobs, I could have more. Seven all seven off, so yeah. Yeah, seven days would be nice because I'd be, every time I came home, I'd move the camper to the next one, I'd look around the hill and say...
I put that very late in the discussion.
Seven days would be quite nice. So, I see the word. No, it's just, yeah, it's mostly concerning, you know, ideas, yeah.
That's probably the general direction. We really haven't got anything set still for sure.
And one other thing that probably we're, you know, had awareness for, no campers or field trailers are going to be allowed on the streets from November through April. All these businesses.
That makes sense.
Okay?
It sounds good.
Okay. Thanks for...
Thanks, appreciate it.
Okay, any changes to the...
Uh, no.
Okay. You need to many more, many reports?
Uh, there's...
Okay. How about your report, Billy?
Just, yeah, a few things. You have that charter, community control, franchise of the room, probably. This could create some interesting possibilities for us. I believe you're on DSL right now, or have... The DSL service, if you've done a speed check in your DSL, it is like one seventh to one tenth, which should be the longer string of video on that DSL. And by the way, if you contact CenturyLink, they will, you'll have to do it every month to get your billing, they will reduce your billing based on the amount of performance that they're providing. So, I called today and after I did the speed check, and they're giving me a ninety, I think it's a ninety percent credit on my internet service. But that's not really what I meant, I'm hoping to have a full, robust internet service. So, anyway, this charter thing, I spent an hour with the EagleNet representative today and we were kind of brainstorming some ideas, and here's what they're proposing. Charters and residents excuse for not upgrading their cable service, like in the distance of line that they would have to bring new line in fifty miles and that's why it's been prohibited. And that's, and then once they get into town, they need to upgrade their service while they're here in town. So, they always use that as their primary excuse for not doing it. And EagleNet now would offer them, and they have several contacts and they'll be talking, they would come back to Charter and offer that to backhaul that, that data on the current lines at a huge discount for anybody else. And a strategy to connect here locally on the EagleNet provided backhaul line. And if Charter were willing to make an investment of about three hundred and fifty dollars per, per household, which, you know, works out to probably a hundred and fifty, a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars here in town. Which I'm told by the EagleNet representative, we use a managed cable company, so they say a dollar that was a pretty reasonable number. They get all that put together, that would be a good deal. Then I talked to Ken Felman, put together our last chart, our last franchise agreement. He's an attorney in Denver that's handled a few things for us. And he believes that we can kind of hold up this agreement. He was already aware of the single net connection, he's been talking to EagleNet as well. And Ransley might become a kind of test case for developing a broadband network that would be pretty robust, which would, you know, obviously would be good for businesses and residences in town. And then they could come back, they could come out and actually offer the triple play that they offer in other communities, you know? So, we're working a couple of angles here, but we're kind of dead in the water right now, much. And, you know, CenturyLink has an order and they had it for over a year, creating their system. They've added a little bandwidth at a time to keep that in box. But when you get to the, well, like, oh, actually, when you're eight, eight, ten thousand feet from the source, the further you get away from the source, the slower your DSL connection is going to be. And so, you know, it obviously needs some, some more work. And I think they've added a few boxes and they kept us going, but now I think they're losing their edge here. So, this is important for our economic development. I think there's businesses that have to have it. So, I'd like to keep pursuing that and keep working on this broadband opportunity that might come about through Charter. It's just...
Didn't the bank hook up the Stratton directly?
Yeah, they did. They wirelessly feed that connection from, from here, because we're an access point. And so, we charge a monthly rental for that, that access point on, on the Straddle Land. They share the data with paper. So, you can pay to have your businesses hooked up, but you have to pay for the five or two year, that last line to your business.
Mm-hmm.
And what she is for expensive.
Very expensive.
Yeah. Anyway, this came in FedEx today, they're providing a resolution, they want us to get signed up in a legal loan, but that, Ken Felman makes the other kind of libraries this year to maybe improve our service here.
Well, they'll just stay on top of it.
Yeah.
I don't know anything about it, because you...
Well, it's great going up. I'm sure you're noticing that same, the slowness of the system.
Oh, yeah, that's all.
Amazing.
Yeah.
I attended the community networking meeting today, I represented the Colorado River District there today and talked about some of the compact issues, compact issues, lower compact issues. Peggy Recker, Recker gave a passionate plea of unity for the county, the town, and special districts in the formation of additional stories, which is, you know, a lot turned in. I know a lot more about this than I do. After the meeting, Peggy and I talked a little bit about the goals she had to pass to the town, you know, get on board with helping to promote this objective. And I politely said, well, we would certainly agree that additional stories is necessary, but it'd be nice to be quite passionate that the meetings, when you have special district meetings, I feel like that, so that would help to promote that unity if that weren't happening. So, I'm not sure how that'll come out. You might hear about that, so we'll see. We've also got an application that the grant award for the bike, pedestrian, and trail contracts that'll be here this week for that section of trail, the line a little hard and ditch up there. Mike...
Have you talked to Tim about that? Is he in the loop on that?
Tim was part of the whole planning process for that trail, so the little trail that's here, so on board with that. And also that trail, that section that we're designated is, is, there's an ordinance on, on files since 2001, I think I've... Yeah, he was, I mean, from the beginning, he was involved in the meetings here.
He was.
And, so he was aware of that.
He worked with DHL on his, on the section of Brown's Park and how he wanted to go through the park.
And he was part of our grant to design that section of the trail, you know, down at Brown's Park. So, part of that team, unity.
Team unity that works out.
Utilities, probably works in the gas department. Brad came up to demonstration of a compact trailer with mapping system and, and valve turner. And guys getting close to decision on all of the aspects that they think are proper, but I will challenge the fit as a budget that we had planned for that back period this year. It's a sixty thousand dollar item. I'm not prepared to put it on the agenda tonight, but it looks like we're getting close to wanting to get that on the agenda. So, could see that actually, water treatment plan progress if, if you have change in my, well, we'll see some of the demo out there. I've got the...
You said that looks like, like advanced and it looks like destruction.
Yeah, they're, they're still in the demo phase out there and it's pretty difficult. That concrete's been hydrated for thirty years and it's hardened and...
That's why they're very thick.
So, we have some movement on a couple of minor slabs that don't look to be structural and that kind of broke down, where you're basically seeing some of the cracks we had out there before. Well, in that same area, it's got a little worse. Part of that was one of the pipes that was hanging out into the old flare fire. Before it got cut off, I think it made a move part of that slab. Anyway, we chose yesterday, took, took some shots in various areas around that clear elevations just to make sure that we don't have any, any of the key infrastructure inside the plant. And I haven't heard yet what those elevations look like. Finally, I attended the policy committee meeting in Denver last week. A lot of discussion, even though, even though CML is not taking any position on the government legislation because it doesn't have to have the municipal control that is to act on that, on some of the government legislation, there was a lot of conversation about it. And one of their special speakers was the head of the Chiefs Association. I don't know if you know him from Green, Green...
Yeah.
He spoke to us for about forty minutes and he and the three or four other chiefs from various cities are kind of handholding each of the bills through the House and Senate, so they crow the bills that are currently coming through. And the Sheriff's Association is actually on the other side of the court on this whole thing. And he tried to make the point, because one of the bills that he's handling right now is the high capacity magazine bill. And there was another gentleman that stood up on Eastern Slope, small community, that was going to be heavily impacted, should back home, we mistake. And he said to the chief, he said, you know, you're carrying a Glock, whatever it was, you know, they got seventeen, like you said, had seventeen rounds in the chamber. And he said, why don't you, why don't you guys compromise instead of setting this magazine bill so that fifteen is the maximum, why don't you compromise and say, you know, whatever the standard magazine size, what it is for each of the different types of firearms that are being sold, that's the size that you have to, that will not, that will be available with that gun. And you can't buy a high capacity magazine in the state of Colorado for that gun. He said, that would be a reasonable compromise and it would also retain eight hundred to a thousand jobs. Those guys would stay if you pass a bill like that. Chief, first off, he said was, he wasn't aware that I had Glock seventeen, had seventeen in the chamber. And then he went on and said that he really was going to endorse the bill in its heart form, so... And you probably know all those bills that pass through the House at this point.
Has it been debated this week, right, in the Senate?
Yeah. There's another bill that's coming out, I sent you all the email on, which is the liability bill.
That shouldn't make it good.
Oh, well. And that's the producer?
Yeah.
Yeah, cigarettes.
Yeah. Blame the guy who made the cigarettes for the one we decided to sell.
That was one of the more, the liability discussions. I attached the rest of the bills, they're pending consideration in fact, so... Any question or things that we're going around on?
I guess that's it. Can we go ahead and do our public hearing with those hopefully at seven thirty?
Republican's also ready. What do we have, the CNCC capital campaign?
Yeah. Okay, new business, I do see, discussion on action to approve CNCC, see capital campaign donation. That's in the packet. Somebody have any questions?
Well, I just have one down there. We, I haven't even got these letters. I got one. And they put a random amount of, I forget what they, I was, thanking us for...
Oh, for the donation.
Yeah, for the donation.
Donation, that's what we have, yeah.
Yeah.
And we haven't agreed with the CNCC donation for five years and I think we're in our third year. I'm agreeing for three thousand a year on the donation. And they put the random amount up, I think it's three thousand seven hundred and fifty in there.
I've got two of those and I was wondering what they were.
Yeah.
How many?
It's one of those promotional things like you did last year with the little stores or the flamingos, yeah. That's how I, I view it, they're suggesting them out, but you might want to get to the family. So, they've kind of up our base them up and... I, I guess it's up to you as well, but I, I want to watch another three thousand a year, shall we?
I think that's what we should say.
Yeah.
Yeah, thirteen hundred, that's good.
What's that?
Fifteen hundred sounds pretty good.
I know that we're in a situation there that it's up to us, we can change it each year. I would not propose the three thousand, but I, I don't think they need, yeah, it's from extra twenty-five percent. We're hoping that we're...
Yeah, I think we've already agreed on that.
Yeah, I think that would be, having a five to acceptable...
I'm sure they'll want anything to give them, it's up to them. If not, we don't have to give them anything.
What's this money used for? What do they use the money for?
Stuff.
People, whatever they want.
This allows us to give all students who come to our two campuses and our servicing is not a change for a full experience, that was rich, they need thirty dollars.
I mean, I guess the part I have an issue with is, you know, there's this two campuses. So, this money can be spent on Craig campus as well as an actual campus.
I didn't think that was the case.
Well, I mean, they could have changed it to two campuses instead of one, they could have changed the dollar.
Well, it's a random agreement. The funds are still going to be utilized strictly for the improvements to CNCC campus in Ransley, Colorado. They track the money down.
Okay.
It's just paid for money.
I just want to make sure that they know we want that money.
You've got it on the backside of the letter, so...
I just want to make sure they know that we want that money spent in Ransley.
And it states that here, CNCC campus in Ransley, Colorado.
I mean, I know our, our, I know the other, but their letter, you know, says two campuses.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I don't... I honestly don't know what the foundation is committed to funding for here. I mean, I'm okay with the three thousand, but I want it to be spent in Ransley, I think.
I agree a hundred percent.
Yeah, I do too.
We don't need to be, I didn't notice, you see, that this is for Ransley. So, if we make a motion for the three thousand with the stipulation that it will be spent at the Ransley campus only, is that according to our MOU?
Yeah.
Also, I'm going to state...
I'll say.
Okay, we have a motion by...
Lisa?
Lisa and a second by Brad to get three thousand dollars, the understanding that it would be spent only at the Ransley campus, is that correct?
Per MOU.
Per Ransley.
MOU.
Per Ransley.
Yeah, I understand. Any other questions? All mayors have the same I.
Aye.
All opposed same time, both passed. So, Peter, will you give us Russell George or...
He does.
Yeah.
This lady maybe come on to your question?
Come on in, Becky. Becky, we were just discussing this donation and I think you got your asking for three thousand about MOU says we would donate five for three thousand a year for five years. Is that what you're here for?
No. Had to think about it, but no.
She's here for this special...
For the dinner dance. Oh, I think...
Okay, then. We won't bother you with that.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Next item, discussion by you, can you go over that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. You did. Item B, discussion of action to approve the officer involved, pretty coincident team protocol and MOU has had here also. Really, do you have anything to say about that?
No, what that was, is that something that was brought up by the Knights of Justice District. It's been in the process for about three years, started by the prior administration under the district attorney's office. It finally came to that item in a few meetings, but they just got to be, it's too far traveled to go into one or two hour meeting. The sheriff, chief, police, and deeper, we had a discussion, we've got all the talk on the D. Phone system and it was all granted, yeah, we would participate in this. I had not talked to Sheriff Valerio. The federal county yet, but to tell him, you know, yeah, we will participate, but our abilities were limited. We had one person and that'd be Lieutenant Kenny, who accounted for whether requiring a lawsuit and so forth. And it may not be, you know, they may call, but we may have to decline and that's just going to be part of it because if anything happened to Glenwood, and it goes mostly with officer ball shootings, deaths, accidents, you know, created by officers or somebody else, that this team would, you know, be assembled with coordinator and they would investigate it. We can still use CBI if we want, if we have an officer ball shooting, that's part of it, we would have to use CBI to take the investigation, but the training, the training team could also assist in it if we have also. Well, it's about being a team player within our district, you know, not going to go to jail because it's just a good mutual aid agreement to go with. But our times will be tough, you know, our resources will be expanded for Ransley because, you know, if we send Roy to Glenwood to the defense, he's not going to be right at the back, everybody else. So, we are, that money, fuel, food, that our cost would be more so than Glenwood parachute, I'm not parachute, but probably even else in that general city right there. And, you know, so that's where, you know, our ability to help would be one of the all.
But you, you feel we should be, like you say, I think we're a team, we're a team player, but in reality, probably we didn't want to be involved.
We, we will be involved in some stand to make officer, I mean, if they call for a team that, you know, it looks like it's going to be, they, in three days, they'll be wrapped up, then we would probably be inclined to stand by. But if it's going to be, some is going to take two weeks.
Right, we can't.
We, we can't, we don't have the resources to spend that. And so, that's what they just have to answer, and I'm sure they, they do, they understand, so...
And you would, you would be able to make that call?
Yes.
That's good. Anybody else have any other?
Well, yeah, yeah, just one down there. I know we're in the public hearing, but I spoke to Mike, he's worked on this thing for two years, part of the screening coming around. And like Benny said, our, we're very limited in what we can provide in an officer shooting if that should ever happen. The amount of resources, which I'm familiar with, the amount of resources necessary, as Mike described, are phenomenal as of where, so we're going to be a natural recipient of this agreement, agreement of resource and probably never provide or rarely provide any support to other communities. I think they understand that to the side of our agency, so...
So, you think it's good news?
And my conversations with Benny and Mike.
Somebody even noticed...
And it may not be, you know, they may call, but we may have to comply, and that's just going to be part of it, because if anything happened to Glenn Wood, and it goes mostly with officer involved shootings, deaths, accidents, you know, created by officers or somebody else, that this team would, you know, be assembled with coordinator, and they would investigate it. We can still use CBI if we want, if we have an officer involved shooting, that's probably who we would have, with CBI taking the investigation, but the privilege, team could also assist him if he involved. Well, it's about being a team player within our history, and not Michael Candy, because it's just a good mutual team agreement to go with. But our time would be probably limited, our resources would be expended permanently, because, you know, if we send Roy to Glenn Wood with answer, he's not going to be right at the back, everybody else goes home. We would put out money, fuel, food, that our cost would be more so than Glenn Wood, parachute, I'm not parachute, but probably someone else in that general vicinity right there. And so, that's where, you know, our ability to help would be involved.
But you feel we should be, like I say, a team, sort of team player, but in reality, probably we will not be involved.
We will be involved to some extent and make officer, I mean, if they call for a team that, you know, it looks like it's going to be, they need three days to be wrapped up, then we would probably be inclined to send Roy. But if it's going to be, someone's going to take two weeks.
Right, we can't.
We can't, we don't have the resources to spend that. And so, that's exactly, and I'm sure they do, they understand, so.
And you would be able to make that call?
Yes.
Okay.
That's good. Anybody else have anything?
Yeah, just one comment. I don't want to be a public hearing, but that's booked, Mike, you've worked on this thing for two years, part of this agreement coming around. And like Becky said, our, we're very limited in what we can provide in officer shooting, if that should ever happen. The amount of resources, which I'm familiar with, the amount of resources necessary, as Mike described, are phenomenal as a look waiting. So, we're going to be a net recipient of this agreement, agreement of resource, and probably never provide, or rarely provide any support to other communities, and I think they understand that aside from our agency, so.
So, you think it's a good deal?
And my conversations with Nancy, Mike.
So, we need a motion? I'll make a motion to approve the officer involved, the incident team protocol, a year.
Motion by Elaine, second by Dan, these are the comments. All favors in the public saying aye. All opposed, same sign, motion passes. Okay, let's move over to public hearing. Public hearing for special benefit license for CNCC Foundation Dinner Dance. Anybody have any concern?
Concern? Or?
Well, we'll, we'll, yeah. If anybody had any concerns this time, Becky, or they don't think we should do it or whatever, they can voice their opinion.
Okay. I just wanted to speak up, just to speak up.
I think Vinnie wrote the letter to approve it. You've never had any problems before, have you?
No.
I'll make a motion to.
Right now.
We're not ready.
Right now, it's. Next, on the item, next item, you have a public hearing for license for new, for open judge. Anybody in the audience have any concern? Why it can be given? Okay? Item C, public hearing for emergency ordinance 676, which is imposing a moratorium on the operation of marijuana establishments pursuant to amendment 64. Do you have anything to add to that, Peter?
Just, this is a renewal of an existing ordinance, 674, and we said in 60 days we'd be back, well, it's passed that time, so we're renewing the 60 day ordinance. Sherman said he will absolutely have a final ordinance that will make this permanent before that 60 days is expired. And then in July, the state will have their set of rules, should have a set of rules established for marijuana establishments. And in October, we have, till October, I think, to get our rules in place, if we want to establish any, like, special taxes or, you know, if we have zoning ordinances of effect, you know, say, it can only be in countries other, above a measure, you know.
The branch out.
But, yeah, I mean, we have to October to get our rules in place.
Do you know what the county's doing on this whole marijuana thing? They got anywhere there. I thought we all had more.
I was just curious. I thought me and your county both mentioned right after the collection.
Most agencies use, I mean, some, you have to say you have established several rules, just kind of draw the balls and collect shit, it's going to cut down.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments? Well, let's move on then, and let's have discussion on action to approve special benefit license for CNCC Dinner Dance.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll say.
Motion by Elaine, second by Brad to approve the license for the CNCC Foundation Dinner Dance. Any other comments? All favors in the public saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
I'm standing.
Motion passes. Discussion on action to approve license renewed for open judge.
There being no problem, I'll make a motion to approve the license renewed for the open judge.
I'll say.
Second, motion by Elaine, second by Brad, any further discussion? All favors in the public saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, and say passes. Discussion on action to approve the officer involved, or excuse me, I'm sorry. Public hearing for emergency ordinance 676, imposing a moratorium on the operation of marijuana establishments pursuant to amendment 64.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Elaine.
I'll second that.
The second by Elaine, any further discussion? All favors in the public saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes. Other than that, informational items, read that, and our scheduled announcements, most of those have already passed. And does anybody else have anything that they would like to add?
Just the loan that we're pursuing for the water treatment plant, 1.5 million, the first half of the application due on February 15th, that's, as it says, the second part of that loan application due March 15th, and a great part of that completed already. The only one other decision on this until August, so it's going to be a kind of drawn out process. But it's 2% my, 3% mine.
Watch the top of your hand, I think Hawaii's economic movement, so it's moving forward. Becky, I have a question for you. For the dinner, when are tickets going on sale, or how do you acquire tickets?
When are tickets going on sale?
We haven't set the sale price of the tickets yet. We're still trying to work out the pricing and the tables this year.
I can't hear you.
We're still trying to work out the price of the tickets right now, so they'll probably be available within the next month.
Anything you ladies would like to add?
Hope you guys come.
Yeah.
And are you going to have a big auction this year?
Of course.
Always do.
Are your slaves actually going to show up this year?
We don't know if we're have, we don't know if we're having slaves this year.
We haven't, we haven't figured that part out yet.
So, you're not going to have a slave auction?
It's too close to the end of the school year, so the students would only really have about a month to get the work done before they'd be leaving for break. No slaves.
Hey, Becky, what is the foundation funding used for?
What is the foundation funding used for? You mean, what, where does the money that the tickets raised goes to? Scholarships, a lot of scholarships.
Scholarships, okay.
Well, did you hear?
Second.
Mo, Neil, the nerve.
Thank you.